We're all set, we got enough people.
Yeah. All right. I guess I will call the meeting of the Clay Township Zoning Board of Appeals to order for October 21st, 2020. And I will call the roll. Debbie Addy?
Here, and may I say one thing when you're done, please?
Dennis Schumansky?
Here.
Joanne Shirkey?
Here.
Bonnie McAdonais Slater, present. Harold Bain.
Here.
And Brian Treppo is absent. We do have a quorum. So, can we have a motion to approve the agenda?
A motion to approve it?
I'll support.
All in favor?
I.
Prove all the minutes?
Make that motion to approve the minutes of... What's that?
September 16th.
September 16th.
September 16th.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so this is where I read the zoning board of appeals preface. The Clay Township Zoning Board of Appeals primarily addresses practical difficulty based on lot size, location, shape, or contour, and/or location of existing buildings. We are guided by section 27.05, ordinance number 126. There are five members of the ZBA. Three members constitute a quorum and they're for present tonight. Each appeal before the ZBA who have... Each appeal before the ZBA will have first a public hearing, at which time the appellant will present his or her case, and then any public comment regarding that issue will follow. During this time, members of the board may ask questions of clarification if a particular point gets belabored. The chairperson has the right to limit comments. When the public hearing is closed, the board will move into deliberation phase of the particular request before us. If applicant should disagree with the board's decision, he or she has the right to take it to circuit court within 30 days of the decision. When your appeal hearing is concluded, you're welcome to leave or stay as you wish. And at this point, when we don't have a full board, we usually give the applicant the option of going forward or waiting until we have a full board, because at this point, basically, everybody would have to approve.
I'm good with it.
Pardon?
Am I the applicant?
Yes.
Let's proceed.
Okay. Well, then, our first case is new business. Yeah? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you. May I say something? I want everyone to know that these folks are neighbors of mine. I have no financial interest in this property. They are not relatives of mine. I have nothing to gain, and I can be impartial and unbiased.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so Jay ZBA 2020-013. Property owner applicant of 7130 Middle Channel is requesting a variance to install obscuring fence in a front yard. Zoning ordinance 126, 3.08.1B states no obscuring fence shall be located within a front yard. So, I do see the applicant as present, and I would ask him to explain his request. Well, I guess we'll open the public hearing, and then ask the applicant to explain what it is he's looking for and why he needs an appeal. As zoning board of appeals approval.
Are you ready for me now?
Yep.
Well, I had a fence originally. It's actually a storage pad behind my pole barn, which is on the same property, but it's separated by a canal that separates my house from the side where it has a pole barn, which is next to my neighbors. And I use that pad to store boat trailers, a little small moving trailers, store edging, and different things. And I just thought it'd be nicer to have that not looking where it could be sitting out and have it
There was a fence.
Close in, and the fence, original fence blew down in a storm as part of the documents there. And it was really too destructive to even repair. So, I want to put up a new fence that won't blow down and hide all the junk.
Pole barns by the road.
Yeah, the pole barn's up by the road, and that is behind the pole barn. But actually, Edison gives it a different address because it's two different properties to them because of the meters and I don't know if that has any bearing, but sometimes they think the pole barn's not even mine. You don't even look at it as part of my property.
So, the fence that was there is totally gone at this point?
Oh, yeah. I had it all. PJ had it all now.
All right, I see no public, so I guess we can close the public portion, and the board can ask any questions that they have.
Dennis, how tall was that fence before? How tall was that fence that you had there before?
They might. I want to put up now.
How tall is that, please?
I, you know, I don't have the documents in front of me. It's probably about six feet, right around in there.
It says six feet.
The same size as you had before.
Yeah, looking at the pictures, that is an old six-foot picket fence, or what do they call it? But, you know, I want to just, can I just start on here is that this is why this is here is because this is misinterpretation of what we consider the front yard and the backyard. Just like we don't allow garages in the front yard, but here on Harrison's Island, in anywhere that's around on the water, all the garages are between the house and the road. So, this is just a matter of if misclarification of what we're considering the front yard and what is the backyard. So, this pole barn is in the backyard, considering by what we do, and the fence going around that pole barn is still in the backyard because the house is still way up front. So, I was trying to find it in our thing here where we clarified this here a few years back about waterfront properties, canals, and everything else like that. And I had not yet found it, because this is the newest stuff here, but that's where we need to focus on that.
I guess for clarification, are you putting the fence just around the concrete pad?
Correct. Just where the old fence was before the storm.
And if you've been to the site, and if you look at the plot plan, it is well behind the house. And even when you, when you, when you put the fence up and you parallel behind it, it's still about six, seven feet away from the house. If you were to make a draw, a straight line going all the way across.
Right, and it's across a canal.
Well, yeah, but it's part, it's one parcel, you know.
Right, I understand that, but it's across the canal, yeah.
There's 200-foot of frontage on the road, so, and the canal kind of splits it in half.
Well, when I was looking and doing, may I? Chairman, may I?
Yes, go ahead.
When I was doing research on this, it could be what Dennis is saying, the actual rear yard, and the setbacks are minimum of 20 feet. And that lot is extremely deep, so the 20 feet doesn't even come near where he wants to put that fence. And there's so really, the issue would be the height of the fence.
So, if I'm looking at the survey, this is considered to be one parcel, correct?
There's one address, yeah.
So, but for that canal, this would be the rear yard, I guess?
Yes. Oh, yes.
Yes, yeah, in my... You're never supposed to expand what was a non-conforming use, but this is a very unusual circumstance in that it's split by a canal, and it's unusual. I mean, these are what the ZBA is meant to deal with.
Yes.
Well, I don't see how you would consider this non-conforming.
If the fence was still there and he wanted to rebuild it, it could be argued that you're extending a non-conforming use, or allowing him to put up, you know, re-put up a non-conforming structure. But I think in this case, an argument could be made that but for the seawall, this, or but for that little cutout canal, this would be the rear yard, and therefore allowed.
I agree with that.
I do, too.
So, would somebody want to make a motion saying why this, it's the ZBA criteria for allowing it?
I would like to make that motion. Like I said, is, this is, again, going back to what we consider front yard, backyard, this is considered a backyard pertaining anything that's on the waterfront, so I guess it's just a miss, or a I don't know how you want to clear, or make the proper word, verbiage of what it's.
I think you want to say that it's... Hold on. Go through the criteria real quick.
And if I could say something, Madam Chair?
Yep, go ahead.
The, you know, by definition, if we look at definition 2.02 under, in 126, that's where it clarifies front yard, backyard. And I understand waterfront properties, they treat their waterfront as their front yard. I get that. When we talking about clarification on what is front yard, backyard, we have to look at definitions. And on definitions under 2.02, it defines the front yard as the area between the house and the public way. That's, that's the clarification.
Right.
And, and we take that into consideration, and we are very understanding of that from our standpoint. So, when I looked at this, looking at it as being the front yard per section 2.02, is forward of the house, so that's where that comes into play. However, there's other rules and regulations about required front yards, and that's why we have a lot of garages out there by the roadway. As long as they're not in that required area, then it's absolutely fine. There should be no issue with this fence. I think this fence works very well in this location. It was just per our ordinance where we're defining the front yard. It, it disallows for a privacy fence, obscuring fence, to be in that front yard, that area in front of the house, between the house and the right-of-way.
Right.
So, I would hate that we would get into, you know, what is front yard, what is backyard? We've got to keep our ordinance, ordinances simplified, and not have two different rules for waterfront properties and, and non-waterfront properties. But with the understanding that that's why it's before you, is to say, yes, this works here. This is perfectly acceptable here, but by definition, it is required front yard, which is where this type of fence is not allowed.
Right, and I think we can get there without having to do the front yard, rear yard thing.
I do, too.
I think you could make the argument about the practical difficulty, that it's a unique situation, not self-created, you know, substantial justice, and it's not contrary to the ordinance.
I agree.
Okay, well, who wants to take it on over that?
Well, technically, I'm not supposed to make a motion when I'm chairing. I believe is the rule.
Make a, I'll make a motion to prove this because of the uniqueness of the property. It's not self-inflicted, it's the design of the property. And then all the others come into bear also. It's not in violation of the ordinance, et cetera, et cetera, you know, the list that we usually look at. So, that's my motion.
There a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. So, I will do roll call. Dennis Schumansky?
Yes.
Debbie Addy?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Approved. So, Mr. Berger, you're going to want to go see Gary one day this week and do the paperwork that you need to do.
Okay, will do. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
The next new business is a discussion request from the building official, Gary Bussell. Do you want to kind of go over that, what you're looking for?
Yeah, absolutely. I think you all got a copy of the letter that I wrote, and just looking for clarification in that regard. When we look at ordinance 126, section 3.01.9, that's where it talks about, you know, two acres or more, 100-foot width, that they can have no more than two accessory structures. So, what I'm trying to make sure that, that I'm on the right page here and clarify is that if we are less than two acres, that there is only one accessory structure permitted. So, that's what I'm looking for on this particular one. I have a couple more issues that I'd like to talk about, but I like clarification on that, because it really doesn't say anywhere in the ordinance, you know, that one accessory structure. But this section here refers me to, it has to be two acres or more to have not more than two accessories. So, what's your thoughts?
Well, I was gonna, uh, it's, it's basically broke down. It's always been you can have two structures. It's just that when you go to, when you're less than two acres, it can't be more, the total accessories can't be more than the whole house. Okay, so if you have an 1,800-square-foot house, you can only have, you know, two buildings that have to be 1,799 square feet below you, two, the two buildings, or two accessory buildings. It's how it's always, we've always had this.
That's for a lot under two acres, correct?
Under two acres, correct, yes.
And as long as it doesn't exceed the coverage requirements.
And then at the same point, it's, it's a 25% land use coverage, and then when you get into over two acres, it's you still can have the two accessory buildings, but then it's now it's restricted, there can't be more than 3% or
Or 6,000 square feet.
6,000 square, yeah. I mean, that's how we've always ran that, is we always had the two accessory buildings allowed on any of these guys. Because most people have a garage and a shed plus their home, and it's I mean, you drive around just about everywhere in Clayton, Clay Township, and that's what you're going to see. Some will have three or four, but there's always a minimum of two, usually, you know.
I mean, I would say that it's a max, too, under any circumstance.
Right.
But I think what the difference is, is, like you said, the difference in lot coverage and size.
Right, because if under two square, under two acres, we always made it where it could not be the total square footage of the home. Like, we just had that big one over on the middle channel last year, remember?
Yeah.
This, they were arguing about the square footage of the home. As long as the accessory buildings are less than the total coverage of the new, or the house, you're
And the lot coverage.
Yes, and the lot coverage, yeah.
And they can fit within all of the different setbacks and
Right, you're in compliance all the way through.
Would everybody else agree with that? Joanne?
Yeah, yeah, that sounds feasible to me, yes.
I mean, that's how we've interpreted all these years, you know, and how we faced ours, what we've been doing here, you know.
And, you know, I'm, I'm looking at it from our ordinance, and we know that our ordinances are lacking in a lot of ways. And on this one here, it was the fact that, you know, it says two acres or more, that you can't have more than two detached structures, and shall be exempt from the provisions of paragraph five. So, it almost puts it in two different avenues there. One, it says two acres or more, you can have more than two detached accessory structures, and you shall be exempt from the provisions of paragraph five, which is the total floor area of the main structure. So, you know, I
But it also, but it also states a total of all access, all accessory buildings.
Yeah, on the bigger lots, on the bigger lots.
On the, the ones that, on paragraph five, it says an accessory building may occupy no more than 25% required here of setback, and in no instance shall the total, all accessory buildings, so that's the key point, all. So, we've always been on the two. You know, again, this, this also goes to boat, boat wells, or boat houses, garage, shed, it all works, it's in the same it all, it all ties in together here, so.
If we look at the, the, about boat houses, it does say in the, in 3.01 that you can have an accessory structure and a boathouse. You know, it separates it there, but it doesn't, you know, clarify it, you know, really to where it says yes or no. And that's really this discussion is, is, you know, you've got a billing official here that, that is entrusted to follow that ordinance book. And that's really what I try to do. You know, and, and when we have something like this that, to me, leads you to believe that, that two acres or more, you can have more than two accessory structures, you know, that's what I'm, I'm trying to define. And whether or not it's something that we always used to do, you know, I, I'm understanding of that, too, because we do have a lot of vagueness in a lot of our ordinances. That makes it difficult, difficult, and also creates a lot more interpretation that I think would need to be done. So, you know, that's, that's why I'm here to discuss that. You know, if it is always the way that it was done, it sure would be helpful for me and the next guy to have that clarified, that all properties can have two accessory structures, just that if you're under two acres, you know, it can't exceed the, the main floor, or I shouldn't say main floor, but the floor area of the main dwelling, or and if it's more than two acres, then, you know, you can, you know, there are limits there, too, but usually, when you have two acres or more, you're not really dealing with the 3% coverage and that sort of thing, unless you're building a monster. So, you know, if, if nothing else, you know, I'll look at this any way that you guys want me to. No problem there, but it would be nice at some point if we could make that clarity in this section, so you know, there was nothing to have to interpret on it, you know, to simplify, you know, these ordinances obviously work the best so that you don't have to read between the lines. And that's all I was asking on that.
So, we would have to send it back to the commission to put a clarification in there.
You know, it would be nice, and
Just make it, amend that section, yes.
But the way it's written leads me to, you know, believe otherwise. And, and like I say, that's why I'm here tonight, just to, to try to cinch that up on whether or not people can have two or not, but our ordinance right now doesn't really say that. It's just understanding that's the way that it's been done for, you know, forever, but our ordinance doesn't spell that out.
But, but at the same point, it doesn't say you can't either.
Right, well, that's
Right, but it's a double-edged sword, actually, you know, you have to look at it how, you know, that's how we, you know, we argue these things all the time, is how we perceive it. And what we, that's perception is everything. So, you're seeing it from one aspect, but again, it's not saying that it's not, but the key word is to all, it says to all, so you know, it's, it used to be in there, because, yeah, we just got new stuff or the updated stuff here just a couple weeks back. But it used to say dual on both, you know, or two. So, I think they just tried to shorten the many, as many as the pages is what I, oh, I think they did here, when they rewrote this. I'm sorry.
I think we should just send it back to planning with the, with the little amendment to that section.
That would be great, yeah.
Yep, I agree with you.
It's simple, yeah.
You know, just to, to add, if I could add, you know, a couple more things here, too. You know, we just approved an ordinance to include storage containers. And one of the things, too, if we're sending something back to planners, and I'm trying to search it right now while I'm talking to you, is that they put, they put
On page three sets, three dash 17 of your ordinance.
Uh, yeah, yeah, it's 1, 16, section 3.16. That actually talks about outdoor storage, yes, you're right, Joanne. That talks about outdoor storage, and they have, you know, some verbiage in there about what you can have outside and what you can, and so on and so forth. They talk about temporary shipping containers and, and that sort of thing. But then also, down in that same section, under eight, they put in permanent shipping containers in 3.16, where we're talking about permanent shipping containers, I think it really needs to be back in 3.01. So, I mean, that's going to be, that's going to create
It's like cross-reference, is that what you're saying?
What's that, I'm sorry?
Like a cross-reference between the two?
Well, I think that if, if we put permanent, or when we talk about 3.01, which is accessory structures, if we could add permanent storage containers to 3.01, and allow the, the outdoor storage, and where they talk about other storages, but they also talk about, you know, temporary, you know, means to hold your, your stuff in 3.16, where that, I think that should be. But I think if we're talking about a permanent storage container, and I know you've all read through it, and you know, the criteria that's now involved in order to use a storage container as an accessory structure, that it needs to be in 3.01, where the other accessory structures are.
Does it still have to have a permanent foundation?
That's what they're calling for, and I'm not sure how we're going to define that yet, but, but yeah, you know, when we're talking about the, the accessory structures in there has, you know, we're back to sizes, we're back to, you know, setbacks, and all that's thing that addresses all of our accessory structures. But when we get it, when we put it in 3.16, it really loses all of that, but defines, you know, the facade and, and the foundation, but it doesn't talk about anything else, such as size, or lot coverage, or setbacks, or anything, and all that stuff is in 3.01, where it should be. So, it'd be nice to see the storage containers, the permanent storage containers, to be moved back into three point, or moved into 3.01, really where that one belongs.
So, can't we just send that back to the planning, too, and have them amend it, move that back to 301?
It, it would definitely help
Help out.
Help in locating where accessory structures are, are dealt with.
Well, we'll just have to see that it gets back to the planning commission.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Yeah, when they, when they pushed all this through, yeah, I mean, personally, I, I mean, I don't have a lot to say, but I, I definitely was surprised when I went looking for it, when I knew it was amended, that I, I couldn't find it in 3.01. And, you know, I had to search and then found it under outdoor storage, which, you know, that's, that's really not the same as when we're talking about the, the permanent storage containers.
So, do you need a formal motion to request that those both go back to planning commission?
I would love to see that happen.
I would say that I would make the motion to adhere what Gary here is presenting to us. Go back to planning commission for better definition, or, and put it in the proper, like this last one with the, because I remember when we did that, that Put it in the proper, like this last one with, because I remember when we did that, that meeting. That that one got thrown at the last end of it and I think that. Our. Whoever writes all this stuff for us, that, that own company. Put it in the wrong paragraph, because I just think.
I would agree, sir.
I think we should go ahead and. And have those two things amended.
The permanent storage containers and the.
The rear.
Number of accessory buildings.
Number of accessory buildings, yeah, correct. Yeah. Okay. That's Dennis?
I made the motion.
I'll support it. Those two items go back to planning. And to be amended.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing done. Let's see.
If I could add, if I had one more thing?
Sure.
Okay, so what I'm just looking for is after someone goes to the ZBA and they're approved. This is a question because I couldn't research and find it anywhere. Is there a time limit to start the project? Or, you know, how long is an approval good for? Is there any, anything that you guys have on that? Is it just open-ended, once you approve it? That whenever they do the project, whether it be a year from now or two years from now, would it still be a valid? You know, ZBA approval?
I came across.
There's time, there's time, there's time limits on building permits and.
Well, yeah, but what's a zoning board of, once a zoning board has approved something, it's indefinite. Because I came across a deal that was like 10 years old and it was already approved. Once it's approved, it's approved, it's just.
A variance runs with the land.
Yes, exactly, so. So.
There are instances in the past where we've put time limits on things as far as you have to build, pull a building permit or things like that, but it's pretty rare.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's excellent and, and that's what I was looking for, just for clarification, so that the. The approval goes with the land, that clarifies that 100% for me and I appreciate that.
Right.
And that's all I have, thank you.
Right, I don't believe we have any unfinished business. Planning Commission representative is not here. I don't believe we have any other matters before the board. Do any of the members have anything?
No.
Alright, we have no public for public comments, so we need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Thank you for, Gary, that's, you were very helpful.
Thank you guys for listening to me.
Alright, we'll see everybody next month.
Alright, y'all take care.
Thanks.
Okay, good night.
Night.